I'm going to go. We believe in the Lord, especially in Jesus Christ. If you are not aware, the Lord is establishing us. La asibiza de kona, sibizolo gopi, esibuyeni da tarashifla Bible church. To the eyes of the Lord, we are his prophet. So he is making sure that all of us are rooted. All of us are become pillars, all of us. We grow a strong backbone. We don't get swayed either way, left or right. On the basis of what he gave. But in a band of a panle, he gave me. I'm going to do a song about the battle of the battle of the battle. He gave me when I found a band of good like in the vision. Because it was when I was on a band, we must share. Amen. So I'm going to go to the same place. It is for this reason, Good School of Ministry on Saturday. Following the leading of the Holy Spirit as the Lord is at work establishing us. We got here semi group. We looked at the following. We looked at the structure, remember, from the beginning of the ministry. And about 20 years ago, we also touched on the fact that the end of February marks the 20 years, first 20 years of our existence. And the first of March marks the beginning of the next or second 20 years. For the benefit of those that will know the part of us on Saturday. I am going to put it plainly, just like the Lord gave me, understand. The Lord said, everything that we went through, the first 20 years of the church, it was written in his divine diary book. Each chapter would correspond to a year. We should go together. The first diary, he said, that was volume one. So now he's pulling volume number two for the next 20 years. So now, see who volume number two, who volume number one of value were a hive. In God's cut up pants, man, it's not going to go to you. You need vision, I mean, she need everything pertaining. I'm going to be like her. So I believe a month or two. I believe this is the best way to make it. What is the meaning of being a church member? And I also emphasize on Saturday, every single individual needs to have their own copy. Own copy of Church Mama Shilpa. I promise you, only if you know a third of what is in this manual, you are not going to be a confused person. You are going to be rooted in the mission and the vision of the church and everything pertaining the church, okay? Just a quick rundown on things that you touched on. We want to go to the phone calls about the good about to. But they're interesting cool. Kule era a part of our culture, which is what it tries code. It just called include both males and females. Okay. So it's a lot of what I'm so good. I was so glad with page number nine, which Church Mama Shilpa Manual under a section, act two, the foundation of the church or the church foundation. The paragraph is a little bit easier. The structure. I'm going to dingos. What do you want, man? I'm sure it's safe. You can promote them. You can promote them. So I'm doing a massage for them. Okay. Then I'm going to use my story again. The part is a lot of parts of that. The structure.
Who's that?
The culture.
Losi won't eat.
That discipline.
Who's part of?
Their expectations.
Now look, I'm going to deliver.
Defined purposes of our church.
We can't go to the band that let you go.
Is purely Bible based.
We can get a Bible in Japan.
We are following.
Sinandela.
Biblical guidelines.
We'll let one go away by baby.
And the principles.
And we go away.
While seeking the lead.
Since I've seen since I've.
From the Holy Spirit. Through prayer.
Go and.
Fasting. Why do we do that?
It's because.
We are doing that to avoid.
It's because.
Following manmade traditions.
It's totally set in land. Like in the way of when they are banned.
Ideologies.
Is it that I'm going to go?
Or interpretations.
No, but it's the level of how much I is.
It is for this reason.
And this is a tool.
That this church.
Who did they leave?
Is founded.
We can get.
On two following principles.
We go and be.
The first one is.
You're.
The word of God. The second one is prayer and fasting. We cannot divorce prayer and fasting. I'd like to believe that to back what this manual is saying. The majority of us are in the term of prayer and fasting. Which is 21 days.
We took as well 21.
We are seeking.
Since I've seen since.
The leading of the Holy Spirit.
Oh, we're going to move.
By prayer and fasting. In this pulpit.
We're going to do a pulpit.
You'll never receive anything.
Our source.
Except the word of God.
The panle ways.
Amen. It can be said, thank you very much. So under the section of the culture is significant. Who will would go on the logo. It is purely Bible based. I will go with. I'm going to ask those. We go to why we go to a bunch and concern. Why we go to jacket and concern rather in any gatherings, session. I why I'm going to answer. I'm going to show you a post tool. Give so famine, so it was over. Saying feel that was over. I'm going to move also. Pull them in the band about come to come to my bank. But I, the founder of this church, what is it? There's a sense of energy. God, I get control of us. Like I a eco into in it. And so you can I pace as well. I'm going to go. Yes, I can. Good. See, Peggy, it is called on Saturday. So Peggy, both males and females. So when it comes to females. Oh, now, come on, my men is. So come to the bay area, no, to a language. Okay. I'm going to do some fun there. I say, Peggy, go pick. Go first Corinthians. So Peggy, oh, chapter number 11. Yeah, we can use a no king James version. And please, I don't want to lose anybody. As I said, we are doing this to open up a platform for individuals who have questions. Saturday was limited. We didn't get extra time to ask questions. And you could tell that people have valid questions. The purpose of the teaching. Everybody must receive and have understanding. Why understanding? Let us look at Matthew 13 quickly. Matthew 13, in course, it's legal in interpretation of the parable of a sow and the seed. Like in course, it a sow went out, getting a bag of seed. And he disappeared seed. Some seed fell by the wayside and the birds of the egg came and snatched it and ate up. And the second one was the second seed fell on the shallow ground, which is rocky. And the other seeds fell among the thorns. The fourth one fell in the good and the fatal ground of which it germinated. And it produced a crop. Yes, I can. So now I want us to look at only two of these grounds. The first one, the Lord says, let us go Matthew 13, verse number 19. He is giving us understanding. The first seed that fell by the wayside.
The book of Matthew, chapter 13, from verse 19 of the New King James Version. When anyone hears the word of the kingdom and does not understand it, then the wicked one comes and snatches away what was sown in his heart. This is he who received seed by the wayside.
Now, the Lord has given us understanding. The first part, the seed that fell by the wayside. Now he's understanding. He says, this refers to an individual, one who receives the word of God, but lacks understanding. Then the wicked one, who was that? The evil one, Satan, comes and steals it from his heart. Not his head, his heart. Because the word of God needs to go straight to your heart. Everything that is in your heart, something that you believe. Okay. So now, the first one is this individual did not understand the word of which it gave the evil one, the legal right, the access for him to come and see it from the heart. Verse number 23 says.
Verse 23. But he who received seed on the good ground is he who hears the word and understands it.
Is he who receives the word and what? And understand it. Carry on, please.
Who indeed bears fruit and produces. Some hundred fold, some sixty, some thirty.
The key thing is the understanding. The first individual heard the word, received the word, but he did not understand it. The last person who is productive is an individual who received the word and he understood the word. The key here is in understanding. Here's a simple example. If a parent, a word called, shout for a child, wherever he is in the room, and then going to say, yes, mom or dad. And then a parent is going to give a child an instruction. An instruction that you go and do this and that. It will take first a child to hear clearly too and understand. Um, Zalangakulum, God, I'm going to understand. I was when the instruction on it. I'm going to click on this, please. You're coming. So I shall go. I'm going to call, so I'm going to be there. I'll go up, you can come, I'm just a penalty. What if you're going to go to here? I'll go again, yes. What you can I'm putting on Peggy weather. So about three, see I'm Puma, so Peggy weather. So Puma, that's why I was in the weather. Now look, I was in the weather. See I'm Puma, he might order hippie weather. How was now? We go to see a panle, we beg you, we're done. Me with bright ideas, it all. Oh, I'm going to get it. You do know it, tripod stand, learn a mama, but it's zulaboli. And there's a what it tells food. Eh, get out Nancy weather, Nancy, Nancy weather. Side tattoo weather, like kitchen. Coco Nancy weather. In us understanding it, learning understanding. Oh, go to a month, we are Koluma. If we don't understand the language, are you sure? You're Koluma, Joe, we're going to go to. So good business to understand. So okay, learn, I will receive when is one going to go. He is understanding. The devil doesn't have a problem with you getting all excited. A preacher going to come up and combat you with revelations. We're blessed, we're excited, we're going to be now. I shall have a half in a paint, I got tattoo, I five, I depend, I excited. The devil doesn't have a problem with that. But the problem has a problem. The devil has a problem. Said, you can be happy, you can be excited, you can be joyful, but don't you dare to understand the word. Don't you dare to understand the word of God. Because he knows people understand the word of God, that a problem to him. So the difference is. We have ministers out there, we have ministries out there. If we're going to my numbers are for ministers and the numbers of churches. And that alone, on the basis of Ephesians 3:10, Gabe, he banned that is in complete control of the whole world. Not the section of it, but the whole word. If he banned that. You understand that is one cool. Go back, I'm on the Alab. Ephesians 3:10, and if you're eating for his intent was that now through the church, God does what? Manifest is what? Many fought wisdom against, against who? Powers and precipities, where are they? In the spirit of reality. This is the purpose of the church. If ever, excuse me, if ever we are a member, you're part of the church. This is the first thing you have to know, what, why you're a part of the church, the body of Christ. The purpose of the owner of the church want to use his church to confront. If you look carefully there, there's powers and precipities that are in the realm of the spirit. These are invisible entities. But we have to confront them. The Lord wants us to teach them a lesson or two. God, nobody taught us, taught us that. Would send this one. Of course, it was easy. Up here, I'm not. All for his win. It's more than that. It's beyond that. Follow, follow me in this just thinking. Matthew 22, the Lord asks the disciples and Pharisees. Who? Whose son is the son of men? Some said, no, you are, the son of him is the son of David. The Lord says, okay, if there's a case, the same David says, the Lord said to my Lord, sit on my head until I make your enemies a forest. Lord said to my Lord. So if he is his son, why he calls him Lord? Yes, I can. Who caught some 110. In course, yes, Pambanweni, crucified, he's vogue. Here is Apostle Paul, who happened to meet the Lord after resurrection. Now, he creates a person, 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 now is to bridge the gap between the Old Testament and the New Testament. He's giving the church the understanding because Paul had a Jewish background. What to give Hebrews 10. What to give? That priest, after finishing ministering, he went up and sat in the right hand of the father, waiting for who? Waiting for his enemies to be what? To a place under his feet. Think about it. If he is waiting in heaven, sitting on the right hand, for the fulfillment of Psalm 110 to be fulfilled. I'm going to tell you. I can hear. He might have been blessed. You know, but that's a better. Little man, let it beg you is upon a meticulous. He banned that early, big, early self righteous. He banned that. Early to get on a money, come on, say, because I want to see things going my way. While Galatians 5, I show a ball, a list of the flesh, one of them of what he selfish ambitions. Definitely, that's not the kind of church that should be able to unite and confront the one enemy and arrest the enemy and subdue the enemy and take the enemy and place it the feet of Jesus Christ. And that's not the church. That is not the church. That is not the kind of church that is focused so much on this present age. The church that focus on many other things. All what you pray for is I want money, I want a bigger house, I want employment. You pray for things that are going to do what? Take care of the flesh. Does it, there are some flesh that's going to die someday and it is going to be buried. Your soul is going to stand before the one who went to the cross for your soul to be saved. This is what the Lord is doing these days. He is knocking sense to the thick skull of so-called church. But individuals that are going to benefit are individuals, are individuals who says, I am submitting my all to him who submitted his life so that my soul can be saved. Individuals that are going to benefit are individuals who are going to what? Kingdom minded. How can you become kingdom minded if you don't understand what's a kingdom whatsoever? Towards the end of the year, last year, the Lord took us through the whole process of salvation. But what is not about that which is said to Romans 10:7, what to get? If you confess you are saved, that is not it at all. So the Lord is changing everything. It's being, it's giving us understanding so that we can be effective, so that we can fulfill the mandate of the church, why he built his church. Churches today are full of what? People want to be blessed. You know, I get me now, oh, he blessed me, club. It will take a gas into in Janu, who's a moon to as a attempt, beg you, try then offering.
We have to expect something in return. If you give to the Lord, do not expect anything in return. When this is a way of worship. So there's a lot that the Lord is working on with intention of giving us a clear accurate idea why he chose us, why he called us, for that matter, why he had to go to the cross, for that matter, why he had to send Holy Spirit? Why are you a part of his church, which is his sport? Why? Definitely when you're not called so that you can bridge and drive fun cars and this and that and have properties in upper market areas and be all that. It's not about that. The Lord is collecting that. So now the purpose of the Lord is so much was promised and prophesied, but few was, I mean, few things came to pass. At times to other people's lives, zero, nothing took place in your life. Nothing whatsoever. Hence, the Lord is seeing us through again. Just think about it. As I said earlier on, we are closing 20 years for body. And we're supposed to be ashamed after 20 years. Only the Lord teaches you what is to be born again. There are people who've been saved for more than 10 years. They don't have a clue what is the meaning of to be born again. We are not saved. Heaven is not our destiny. Our destiny is for us to inherit the kingdom of God, which is power of God to rule and reign, supremely sovereignly. Heaven is a part of what God has created. So now if when we think as we were taught. As Zulunis of Figas, it's that in our crowns we are going to be rewarded. After that, we are going to be given what assignment? What needs to be done? We'll look 19, oh, together. One of the faithful, the master had his servants and he gave them a mina each, 10 of them. And one said, "You gave me a mina, I use it, I got 10 more." And the Lord said, "You've been faithful to the few. I will make you responsible or make you to be ruler over 10 cities." That is a territory on the basis of what it is. It's about rulership. Christ wants us, want us to rule and reign with him. Yes, Wagan? There is not even a single verse in the whole scripture which says, "Work is what you can get to heaven." 2 Peter, chapter 1, verse number 11. "Oti, we are going to receive what a rich welcome into eternal kingdom of God and Savior Jesus Christ." Galatians 5, it says, verse number 20, 21, 21, it says, "Those who live in this manner," as I said to you before, "they are not going to what? To inherit the kingdom of God." Is it clear? So these are the truths that the Lord is restoring back to the church. I know same room says, "For in your conduct," so that our minds can be lined up with the will of God and Savior Jesus Christ. Let's go 1 Corinthians 11. Let us look at first of all, verse number 6, verse number 6, before we can go.
The book of 1 Corinthians, chapter 11, verse 6. "For if a woman is not covered, let her awesome be shone; but if it is shameful for a woman to be shone or shaved, let her be covered."
I am implementing the strategy that I learned growing up. My math lecturer said, "If you are given a problem to solve for acts or to come up with a solution, first gather together things that are explicitly stated into a clear, okay?" Yeah, well, I've lived long enough. I've used all my hair. Used all up, okay? Here, the scripture is what? Is clear. There is no in-between. I spend the food. Okay. Okay, this is where we start. What are we doing? We are fixing, we are pegging in. We are pegging, we are fixing the boundaries based on the scripture. As we read scripture further, which is outside of that which has been said clearly, plainly in scripture. Therefore, from verse number 3. We're reading prophet. We're reading.
But I want you to know that the head of every man is Christ, the head of woman is man, and the head of Christ is God.
Holy Spirit of Corinthians apostle Paul here is what? Is giving us understanding of what is called divine order, meaning divine chain of authority. Who Christ would choose to submit under who? Angus? Good. And. Now, "A little head in Greek, little calf leg," simply means a head, which is different from another head, which is a archangel. But when it comes to calf leg, we speak of something or a position of first order, pre-eminence. Okay, so now, the same word is used, the relationship of Christ and God the Father, the relationship of a husband and a wife. A guney, simply means a wife, not any woman. He order, okay? He forecasts a great authority. The father has authority over the son. The son submit under the father. A wife submit under the husband because husband has authority in that order. Why am I emphasizing this one? I want to learn, I want to show you, the whole thing that is about authority, basically. Yes, Wagan? Let's begin in verse number 4.
Verse 4. "Every man praying or prophesying, having his head covered, dishonors his head."
Oh, man, I'm for the same way. Yes, Wagan? Utlazisa? Ango, Zopel. Oh, man, for the same way, if I cap it, no, if I cop ahead, no, if I parrot it, it's like a colleague. Yes, Wagan? Okay. One emphasize a lot. These characters, especially this fazane, they are very attached to the subject. Are we happy with that? Clear? Okay, verse number 5.
Verse 5. "But every man who prays," sorry, "but every woman who prays or prophesies with her head uncovered dishonors her head; for that is one and the same as if her head were shaved."
Oh, okay. Either you're colleague, no, you're prophet. See, because as I said, the prophecy is not limited to what? To predict the future, angit? Or some kind of divination? But you know, you could, you know? You receive what? A divine inspiration, which when your mind, your heart is not the source of what we're saying, it comes from above. What's gonna happen in the future? Okay. So, because the prophecy, um, I'm going to extrude fulfillment of what was spoken by God through prophet Joel, which you told the last day, God is gonna pour out his spirit so that sons and daughters shall prophesy. Which song? Song? A prophecy is wide as far as it has what? Eight streams excluding office of a prophet. There are 12 types or kind of or departments of a prophet's office. There are 12. But the prophetic stream about our aid. Cici Beogo, Cici Beogo, verse 25, angit? Sabuga, verse number 2, no, no, verse number 4, off on the quickly.
The book of 1 Corinthians 25, verse 2. "Of the sons of Asaph, Zechariah, Joseph, Nephiaya, and Ashereth, the sons of Asaph, were under the direction of Asaph, who prophesied according to the order of the king. Of Jethielben, the sons of Jethielben, Gidilaiah, Zeraiyah, Jashaiyah, Shimai, Hashbaiah, and Lilithana. Six, under the direction of their father, Jethenaiyah, who prophesied with their heart to give thanks and to praise the Lord."
What's the understanding here? Individuals, they are bagopi, baganda, ubabundaba, no, mufunde sweto, olutiti, go music and worship ministry. Ben, Jani, by a professor, gani, gamma musical instruments and vocals. Yes, Wagan? Good, it's in law, by a server under the inspiration of Holy Spirit. I'm just picking up one or two of our streams of what of prophecy. And then when we look at 1 Corinthians, chapter 14, I spoke of verse number 2, same with verse number 4.
The book of 1 Corinthians, chapter 14, verse 2. "For he who speaks in a tongue does not speak to men but to God; for no one understands him; however, in the spirit he speaks mysteries." Verse 3. "But he who prophesies speaks edification and exhortation and comfort to men."
He who professes does what? How? All of us, let us look at screen. Now, he who professes does what? What is to edify? What is to edify? Is to equip. Yeah, boy, we are Zeus. I'd like to believe, man, that action of respect, yes, Wagan? I am prophesying, I'm teaching you, yeah, Zeus, edify. Two, what's Jani? And comfort, okay? Abayabantu, but he is encouragement, abayabati, you are motivating somebody. Holy Spirit is gonna give you that word, words of comfort. And here you come and you give comfort. At times, you approach a person, don't be getting routine. It's gonna speak through you. You are prophesying to that person, yes, Wagan? Okay. Hands behind his back. He can't use you. Your Holy Spirit must use you only Sunday service, we can't, I think. He can't use you at shopping mall. Holy Spirit cannot send anybody to your way because looks at you, it's like, aish, we are not in your position. So. Ouch, yes. Look at verse number 1, verse number 18. Same chapter, verse number 1.
Verse number 1. "Pursue love and desire spiritual gifts, but especially that you may prophesy."
Oh. Out of nine gifts of the spirit, Apostle Paul, yes, long as I don't go, he must prophesy. Go, we are, the church can be edified, ngali, gift, if you're to prophesy. We speak under the inspiration of the Holy Spirit. Okay, let's carry on. Let us look at Babusbi, amen. Here Apostle Paul is placing on left hand, the one who speaks in a tongue, on the other hand, the one who prophesies. He says, "We have to desire spiritual gifts, but most of us, we can all prophesy." Over here, he brings this individual who speaks in a tongue. Now, if somebody speaks in a tongue, that just speaks to no many people, nobody understands him. He speaks mysteries to all of us, but he speaks to God. In some area here, say, there's somebody who speaks in tongue, edifies himself. Nobody gets edified if somebody is addressing us in a tongue. The scripture does not forbid people from speaking tongues, we found in chapter number 14. All of us have to speak in tongue. But Apostle Paul here is bringing order in the church so that they can know. If it's the tongue that Holy Spirit is speaking through you, same Holy Spirit must deposit an interpretation of a tongue in same room so that we are going to, all of us going to be edified. Then let me digress a little bit. There has been an issue out there. What issue? People has a problem, gani, gama, female ministers. Chapter number 14. Okay. Aba, if she wants to learn, she must ask her husband at home. Yes, Wagan? Baba, so, Baba. La, 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 I'm equipping now. What is going on? When I'm ready to give answer to those who ask of your faith, who's who has when? And who goes or who misquote a scripture? Meaning you must be famous yourself with what? With a scripture. The scripture raises follows. "I do not permit your wives." I got a show women in general. What are your wives? Your women, addressing who males, a base in Konswin with their wives. I got a show, every woman, what are your wives? Please read for me, verse number, no, sorry, verse 14, chapter number 14. See, I go first, chapter 2, okay? Chapter number 14. Oh, verse number. So, from the backwards so that you are going to be equipped. Okay. Can you add in for the ceiling there? Okay. Oh, verse number 34, verse number 34.
The book of 1 Corinthians, chapter 14, verse 34. "Let your women keep silent in the churches; for they are not permitted to speak, but they are to be submissive, as the law also says."
35?
"And if they want to learn something, let them ask their own husbands at home; for it is shameful for women to speak in church."
Quote, passage of scripture, Apostle Paul here, how many categories of people that must be silent in the church? Not women alone. How many categories? Category 1, I want all of you to prophesy, but in order, one after the other. Again, if somebody standing in front of the church and Holy Spirit gives interpretation, we'll let the pants, lono kuma, must be what? Must be silent. Keep silent and allow the next person to come. That is group number 1. Group number 2, if there is somebody in the room who speaks in a tongue and somewhere Holy Spirit gives an understanding. Not all translator, or interpreter. It's between him and who? And God. He must go back to his seat and keep silent and speak to God. This is a paradox. If our understanding of keeping silent is shh, how can he keep on talking while I'm silent?
Verse 3.
Sorry, verse 27, sorry.
Verse 27. "If anyone speaks in a tongue, let there be two, or at the most three, each in turn, and let one interpret; but if there is no interpreter, let him keep silent in church and let him speak to himself and to God."
I need to say, in the verse, how can I be silent and keep talking to God? Oh, shout your mouth and keep on talking. I guess we're for the eyes. But if there is no interpreter, let him keep silent in the church and do what? Oh. If one were to speak in the church, meaning I have to stand up and address the church, since there's no interpreter, I must go to my seat. Why am I taking through all this? I want us to have an understanding and the manner at which we have to learn. By jumping these two groups, group number 1, no interpreter, or professor, angit? Apostle Paul is addressing what? Order versus disorder, not men against women. Order, not. Everything must be done what? In disorder. Yes, Wagan? He's not, she's not allowed to speak in the church. Three chapters back, chapter number 11, he does not allow a woman, if a woman pray in the church or prophesy. Our understanding is flawed of the scriptures. This is what you have to know. Scripture will never coordinate each other, never. Just when we are about to pick up what is script, should know what went wrong. We need now extra biblical material in order for us to understand what was the issue there. I can use the very same Bible to bring you understanding of what was going on here. Extra chapter number 17, Apostle Paul here, figure Athens. What was there being in Athens? What are my philosophers in this area called? What? Aerofocus? They will sit all day long. Ben, Jani, debate, be accurate, gani, manual concept. These were philosophers. Way back then, they will, they will know concerning public gatherings, gama, debate. I guess is what this people have to say. Inga ako, uma ngabe sebebo numpol, basically, this is what this people had to say, ngoba, uzaneaki, ayidoli, uchi, uzaneke philosophy. Ngoba, they could not tell difference between what? Philosophy etipetwa ngao nani, nebandla, ngoba, ibandla, langanziw bandla. So, abantu, umabetla ndawonye, they didn't have no prior experience, oguti, how we have to behave. So, baba, kubage, ngoba yaabo, umabetla ngelapan. La, at, at, na, omfega, ukamoga, nyake, ini philosophy, apaga muti, ay gali, 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 ngonjani, ngonjani, nomirkamulwa ngelapano, ngati strokfe. So, that was the only experience they have in public gathering. So, bona bebe kobe, benza indaba atu, umposo pauli, no wenzwajalok. Hensakuluma ngani, ogutifasand. Especially, kobe sasfazan, why wesfazan? Genkwa ogutige, abes lis, abebesasagel, they'll bring their unsaved wives along and konzwin. So, bona being in that experience, we behave, we zone behave, basically, amakozasenz, amantotanga tlupe. Yes, what? Okay. Let us go back to the subject yet to imagine. Yo ngaza, yethanda me. Umanje sivu meleni, oguti, ik head covering, ekuyangayo, lana, go chapter number eleven. Ille, engene kanda, inga kitlanga, matiota, ngoba, akue, ngendu, ngendu, engena pegue kande, peyenuen. Otamato, otafana, kulege, nama professor, ngazile, ame kwa ge, ilkoga, angit? Ogusho tige, it's him is the same, it's the same, because it's the same. So, group man, verse number six, angit?
Verse six. For if a woman is.
Oh, let's tell him. Let's tell him, that's your favorite too, angit? That's your favorite too, verse number six, okay, this is what?
Verse seven. For a man indeed ought not to cover his head, since he is the image and glory of God, but woman is the glory of man.
Oh. I boy, of course. Utata omuendwe, likuile level of interpersonal relation. I guess, begala na, na, u, 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 u. Uwashni, angit? Ochadene, of course. Of course, yashayidila, how many days? How many days? Ah, kanjane, manejane. Baba usbya, batinla, angishutinwene, batin. Shop, shop, shop. La le la. La le, la le. Abantu, abainvatiile. Aba kumbesing, wa break, wa break. Wasi etige, uzo shaya, ini, he's a stopper. He left best for last. Wasi namhla njegi, angabonu to manje, ngizo shayangovala, ngzobizwa muqoskanza, apari de pamweni. Ngani, ngoba, a woman, a wife, is a glory too? Exactly. That's what it means. I struggle, begala, pana, see, I go verse number ten.
Verse ten. For this reason, the woman ought to have a symbol of authority on her head, because of the angels.
Sitka zidam, kebe la, angit? Angitandile, umbuzo, volebomkonza, concerning, in, in, the angels, as in. Many people, they limit term angel to divine angels. I'd like to add, I mean as well, ini, diabolical angels. Why? Angels submit under a mantle, that is Hebrews one, one fourteen. Would angels are what? Mini and spirit that are created to serve those who got in the right, what? Like salvation, yes, what? So, these are spirit beings. Eza ko engelos, zilindena, zubona, a symbol of authority, oma weneo command. Ngege, ethangelo swindigi, commandi, obopama goda. Nomoshayisnope, ngege, once again. Ngoba, engelos, bu, bu, na, ina, ubona is symbol of authority. Ngogunja na ma timon, owa kooza ma timon, I don't care, o nga fast, o eighty-eight days and a half. Funamandla, ochadene, mkuakimi, ba ma timon, ngayaga, nyangazo, uma ngabo, ngazili, ngoba, ngoba, umngazo, ini, se symbol of authority, ngazan trasa, ngati. Uma ngabe, ndali, nanangu, nekwe, ne, agme, shoshayrimo, to ngama. But wait until same person have a uniform, agme, sozoma, angit? Lo mundu, agana, imaa, amandla, utamisomoto, umutanda, li otrak, ingamshayesomoto, agafungo. Kode otrak, va, ubona, a sign or symbol of authority, we are submit, asamitu doshoti, asamitu nimtombazan, asamitu domfane, abo, kusamitu kuban. Ngoba, da faga me, kune, the entire authority, abane, the whole department. Kote, le authority, be, ubona ngani, ife, ma koinfor. Kule amoya, koesfazan, umngazo, opa o, a symbol of authority. Jango ba ipo, yes, umkuaku. Line of authority, ekand. Okay. Your verse. Number thirteen. Umbuzo, verse, we found answer from everybody, verse number thirteen?
Verse thirteen. Judge among yourselves.
Now, I say judge any imagine, go back?
Is it proper for a woman to pray to God with her head and covering?
It's in answer? Kapi, aso, no abatad, kune, people who get convicted, aspin the foot, funamdanam?
Judge among yourselves.
Now, I say judge any imagine.
Is it proper for a woman to pray to God with her head and covering?
It's in the bend, you know? Ba atule ngala, basa funda, ba, ngabe, seeswa, kona, yeah, ama brilliance now. Awafunu, kaka, awafunu, food agat. Awafunu, the, the name.
Is it proper for a woman to pray to God with her head and covering?
It's in answer? Okay. We should, it's clear, la, oguti, umpalo, otu, kumele wesfazan, na kule, nama professor, angani, at when? La le la, go verse number fourteen.
Verse fourteen. Does not even nature itself teach you that if a man has long hair, it is a dishonor to him?
Asimala po. Now, saswama, yasiya mvelwen. Nomunga lupu sangha, emhlaben. You always find the wesfazan, bane, we nuwale zinde, ngna besle, angit? I'm very, very much. Hey, ankatal, ogubaba usbya, otanda, unewale zezela. Angaluga, afaguma nyoli, kanda, yegesee. Osa ngazai, kume mhlaba, faga, ama herpes. Oremveld, uslese, yeg. Kono, ma nyoli, we nuwale. Yes, what? Go, very much. Nomunga lupi, I'm very. Umangalo, spese, I'm very, ogut, go, very much, as very much. Okay. Uma weslese, nyenewale zind, konda swae zil. Ena, kona futya, bugota, hey. Kona isi mes tizele. Ayo, ninseso, padale, uko, no tropo tis. Ngapa, ndabo weslese, kona, ngapa, atu, uchen to, no, no, no. Yeah, bonda jale. Okay. Abesfazan, they don't have to do nothing. If they, if they, if they don't cut their hair, their hair gonna keep on growing, keep on growing, okay? Next, verse number fifteen.
Verse fifteen. But if a woman has long hair, it is a glory to her, for hair is given to her for a covering.
Okay. It's on, he has changed, go verse number fifteen. Oguti, i issue, or a subject is not honor for the hair, but for the length of the hair now. Yes, what? Not to imagine. But if a woman has long hair, in length there. Subject has always been about the hair, but, of course, verse fifteen zooms now into the length of the hair. Otige, wesfazan, yeg, onenwale, kulu. Injani? It is what? Or not to God? Angit? I can bear, not to God. But to who? Oh, okay. No wonder you are so resistant. Oguti, whatever needs to be done, need to be done, to what? Otinu first Corinthians six, oh, verse number nineteen and twenty, otige, sate, yengege, kazan it, we are not our own. So, we have to do what? Glory five God in our. Angit? Yes, what? Ogusho is, it is, awafunu, the name?
First Corinthians, chapter six, verse twenty. For you were both at a price, therefore glorify God in your body and in your spirit, which are gods.
Ogusho, ogutige, uma ngimile, ngashongo lutu, gi, kokono, ngogayo. I represent my curious God. Fana, angani, atuni esu, namu, jo ngimili, ya dunisu. Emzimben. Uma ngan, shijang, ngoge, uma tando, ngisemajana. Who gets edified? Nobody. But yourself. Is in, no wesfazan, zini, ziu, domo, zinkasmo, kuyen. Ogusho, here we have individuals who are in competition. Na, umund, owa zaretinu, ngokul, ngokul, utongokul. I will never share my glory with no other. Two, I will never allow no flesh to glory in my presence. There you go, otige, angifloboke, meaning, wa, feel confident, oh, man. Oh, anishe, jale, nganin. I say, alibona, is, li shaw, yo god. Kumbul, kumbul, kumbul. Ungazo, u, 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 ngene, sonwen, sipisone. Ngu, ogutu, otrabange, ama ideas always different. Is, alish, oguti, is saw, no, so is kwe, my god, I guess, lock. Kamaya masu, protest to your level of obedience. Oguti, you have time, you have health, you have strength, you have everything, would you do that which God wants you to do, o full capacity, would, when the ongathanda? Line there be very good, intimacy eighteen. In the meagre of the garden, there was what? Tree of love and what? A tree of knowledge of good and evil. God did not take that tree of knowledge of good and evil, where bega, right in the island, la, funo, swi, me, abo, dejala, nombe, intabeni, funo, sha, abseli, kabel, weza, kule, tra. To test obedience, next to that tree of love, there's a tree of knowledge of good and evil. What were they? Ya challenge, ongawa, is lock, ya challenge, lock. Ngogunjane. Awuti, ngeki, oguzi, u, ngene, ku, some kind of accident. La, u, ngene, estendi moto, umlid, uchise. Ogusia ngazaya, awa, ngazo, funa ngazo, ngazo, mufilhe, iska. Angtla, gisi, i, 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 shoboli, leva, fele, abada, ma shoboli, abo, de. Guko, na, abantu, itingosi, umangala, we, ati fast. Ngena, seven days. Otengayashule, wangibone, sangil, anganke, you want to go to close all the taps? Was, ana, angit, was, was faster, lapo. Ay, kina, zogale, gase, kese, kwa, akoshadin, akolutu, was faster. Umuundu, wenza, inu, ngoba, se, epokai, simo, kunkul, ngokul, akusiona, a sweet smelling perfume, as in, a sacrifice, ay, to, la, akusiona. Opushi, wana, wa, pho. Yes, nga, wa, pho. So, uma menzi, uze, uh, 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 uze, otinu, wenza, land, don't find by yenza. Uma menzi, oguti, amforce, ogut, enze, awen, awen, awen. Indio, mete, enze, wasa, wenza. Yes, what? Long hair wesfazan? Ini? Glory. Gatin, ngati, na ni kama, that, that, that is, drive people to spin. Basically, etige, kumbula, oguti, indaba na.
Verse fifteen.
No, same verse, verse fifteen.
But if a woman has long hair, it is a glory to her, for hair is given to her for a covering.
Na, agya. The subject, ini, long hair, length of the hair. Okay? I kama, it is covering. Lichwana, one kama, kama, eswa, funda, before. What is covering? Gomago, goma, mama verse. Cata lupto. What is uncovering are cata luptos. But this one, it is periboleon. Ogusho, periboleon, go, again. What is she doing? Periboleon is a noun. But peribili simply means it's a verb, wenza. Yes, what? What she has done, she has wrapped. Let throw over, wrapped, spread, veiled. Ogusho, i length, i nuwale, iyon, it covers, i, 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 espes, nix, omzimba, waku, macho, ombe, omchana, ogut, that is your what? But it does not replace this, oh, verse number six, oguti, kumbay ngaza, umangazile, kunda. Is it clear? That what makes people wrong completely, nobody. Na, kumpalu, oyasho, oguti, zinwale, zikovering, ogusho, a, sikizdo, zikovering? No, la, i length, zinwale, kuyangayo. Wana go male, ogut, ngaza, uma ngazo, kunda. Yes, what? There's a meaning of that word, let's take the periboleon, simply means to throw over, to veil, to wrap. Kamba, abaya, sebe, kumbula, ma chicken wrap, aga ban, ban, ban. Okay, that's what it means. I wrap ikanda, but cover the greater part of the body, as in, you lesamba, zefe, ogupi, is answer, pan. Yes, what? I boy, of course. Dale, kala fans. So, it is, it is in the basis of us to have to go through this, so that we can open the floor for questions. Ngoba, is kala, na, simple corner, some more questions, and no, there are related questions.
Clutches.
Of father, again.
Um, you know, answer, thila, ogbo, as, um, um, diva, ba kasta, defa, salav, um, first Corinthians, chapter eleven.
Yes.
From, oh, verse seven, two, two, verse nine. I think, even in, um, zanjie, as we found, oguti.
No problem.
For a man indeed ought not to cover his head, since he is the image and glory of God, but woman is the glory of man. For man is not from woman, but from man. Nor was the man created for the woman, but woman for the man. I think, heba confused, la, ba, ba, ngoba, ogut, this is, kumisputu, we created, so, so, no, they believe so.
Okay. I guess, change the chapter five, author is King James Version, Genesis five. Author is King James.
Genesis, chapter five, verse one. This is the book of the generations of Adam. In the day that God created men, in the likeness of God made he him.
Man?
Male and female created he them and blessed them and called their name Adam, in the day when they were created.
Okay. This scripture, it also speaks about men and the women, but speaks about the male and the female. Genesis five, yes, unpacked, okay? Oh, Genesis two breaks it down for us, otinu, how God created men, human race, took the dust off the ground, put together in breath into the nostrils. Okay, good. Uh, dala, ini, made of, chapter five, oguti, he called them Adam. Was chapter five, thank you. Um, verse number two. And called their name, who? Adam. Meaning. Female and the male, they were in one body. When God created from the dust, yes, both of them were created at the same time, they were in this one body. For the first time, a woman had to come out of a man, that's a different story. We all know, overlap, wherever, God has to put. And then tell what? And then form what? Yes. He didn't inform a female, the female was already being created inside this world. A woman, for the first time, came out. There's a difference between female and a woman. Oh, fraud, no match, eh?
Baba, ngisala ne, confusion, umsho, nganjane, confusion, nyami, si, teni, isekteni, shooting. Does that mean, u adam, the man adam, lo, o, o, ngol, amne, kuzwane, kwa, gulo, lo. male and female
Yes, Boga, he called their name plural, their name male and female, they were in one, isek somzim just call o Adam is kozas
Yeah, oh, Baba oh, Baba, me she wa kishwa woman leave o melananyaya so I think inisala ne, umbozuti, where is the female then?
What in umbozo?
Anyt, oh Baba, kazu whati
Uh huh
kazungkungulitani wa dana omzimba onu male, no female
Nah, go now, I will show you, I will show you
Yeah, yeah, yeah
Tanda game
Yeah and
Yeah
Ukungulungulu alalisa o Adam wa keep a rib, and it's about
Muzu chak, fundala he called their name the male and the female their name was what? exactly that's what I'm trying to say okay later on what's a yajana? the sitko fast lad, gan gobbo le human race, we can meet Adam, simply means a human race hu, pelaj ever is kati in kosiya bona, oh what you umundu esetwin esesoto we are here, we enjoy a fellowship job unkungulungulu esitko soto kedyo dwe dwe namu no ngukulungu so this time goes with male and the female esitku ne soto and then ngoba unkungulungulu muriya esakleshi, was it a lale? was it a balwani?
Okay, if unguzo, Baba, anguzo, yakin shu iska se balwani wa yshwani sa the female and the male
That's it
And the male was called in the woman
Yes in way ni of a female ya puma nalio a woman lena eme a male, ya sa ne sikusutala etobano Adam yeah and then Adam, I said, I'm going to have a ngoba what? she's going to be mother of all living she's what? a mother of all living that's why I'm busy about have accidentally unkunguwa kamba, whoever go to Eva o- o- o Adam o amkamba, or go to Eva
Yeah, honest okay kshuti Baba, umangabe, umangabe izu according then little woman was created from men which was uguze kshwani because what is uguze kshwani so a kshwani sela for a man o woman, ekish because little little for a man indeed ought not
Kujala, umangabo unkungul etiye it's not good for a man to be all one, I'll make him what? a suitable half mate umpozo pa otata from that statement oh what you for, to assist, to help in that context lanalala ban daba lanumondala aga promote ini oh what in door ta ikanda zelos far than, eh, go koda ago koda yes, again a woman will never be inferior to a man nah, manage man is not superior to a woman but just like the Holy Trinity, the Father, Son and the Holy Spirit bavumelan be equal in glory, equal in honor and power those three of them, they possessed the essence of being God they are God we don't have many gods we only have one God in one body, which is God yeah, God so i- 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 if there's a third term etiye ontological relationship they have to ba- bavumelan base beti, for economical purposes, bavumelan, what okay? nila example, ngayasa, if three people that come together from a company the company kukuna ama offices, engmela bekon like your COO no CEO, won't so, songomas fagi imali nganayo uguze, pinzi kobege kumeli what is, se vote, uban, se vote, ubanzo, what do you know not ngoba ubani is superior, inferior than the other but just ngoba umte to utimandi, what to fago be konumodozo, tata, the whole responsibility what if a company is thinking again, ubani fa kwenya, yet to kwenya, that's all so bad we have to appoint them officers God did the same not unkungu ngoba, eh, less than God not in kosiya suklesu, no ma, eh, less than God he is God, Holy Spirit is God they are all God but in the fact that they are one they call themselves God three persons parents of the Father, parents of the Son and Holy Spirit that's how it works amen what Luches?
What Luches?
Father, I don't
Yeah, we give a pass on a camera, Luches Christ, who said that, amen
Amen
Umbozwa mbla, Baba because this so if you like clarity and oh what you uh, jo, what is zelingan eh, zele ne nganza, isaba zaman tumazan so wa zwa fo oh, umbozwa mbla, Baba because so what you, if you need clarity
Yes, yes Yes
Is that into a correct
Yes
So umbozwa, oh, what of that? is what it is what you, Baba? you're ready, it is 1 Corinthians 11 just far than, milla are coverage at all times so umbozwa, because this by the virtue of you because far than, oh, umgili, because Luches Christ as Lord and Savior, billionia so kumeli ukav doesn't matter whether you are in the office look seven za just ordinarily serving of the Lord Jesus Christ, may you cover the chi ka
Okay
And always be, if it is so far if you want to show so it doesn't matter whether second wind secaya we event at all times
Amen okay si kala, o dabaluwe to ngogutin ngogutige a woman in order for her to pray or to prophesy or to cover the head, yes, again Sasha, oh, yes, I think umasbogu kumpalo ini ugo prophet Sasha, Sasha, I'm going to do three in general oh what, he who professor does what? edifying it comfort and what? yes, again what you what is to prophesy is to minister or to serve under divine inspiration which is low bozobo wenza, whether we are kulu no ma, ulidali o music or instrument what logo owenza, kuvalekbaniko moyngwe yes, again okay Sasha, I think usemsebenzin your colleague aga approach atiye after work, you're focusing on this and that moyngwele, of funu kuxebensamanch what is yajana? to bring comfort to encourage to edify this individual God again, what you, kumpalo ngiege ogwaz, ogwenz, oh, again, ngwasi, dangit angifuni nitige umatuna, what eh, twenty five hours setata kumpalo that's a nitge, me na oh, what you umangabi, because Luches case, wakona umuntet, inguti amseze whether usemsebenzin no ma eses tor no ma esegui event yeah, what is which is wena, umangoya mopah hands behind his back ngoba, yaya sabenzu, ngwasi oh, what you low umundu, low yoke osi luzile oh, what you atole osizo from the Lord Jesus Christ to use you instrumentally as a vessel, so to speak me na ngingati we na, umdona unkungu nganpela kukona bataba shloge kukona abantu moyngwele, what, no, no it do twenty five hours we are la la, likona, we are ay, oh, what you ngia pume nlini uh, ngichlele kay, fangrelax, and what is logu shoy is not for everybody, ngitekona ma individuals, moyngwele is so strict, kubon shame omu niwa, oh my little tweet, aga, same thing, same thing, pastor man, oh, sanen in kosiya, I'm negi freedom oh, what you uend, angahamba uzeno angahamba, ngoba, that any connect, kenyekay kota yena yeah, what is so kushu ye logo logo is kuma ngakumiya na, iloko, what you oma moyngwele ekete wen, which is usemsebenzis oh, through like, of funsebenza ngawe, oh, what is somebody else base, enenza, nilangan na ngangala, se funsebenza manch when awokuke position, what is ngoba, ngwasi what you, ngie umundu, like, sabenzis, ngie go prophet kadi ma, imanbanai what you ay, me na, frigo, operating, frigo, kamba, go kele ma, umbozwa, na ngesa, na ngesa yes, come in, tat ah, as, yes, 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 yes I will show you, kore was we, umazu shangeli okay saying, what you in that scenario, it's up to you we could, what is boyle agi line konzwen ay, ko in sezo aga ko Baba, onge zenkonzwen, afagi skipa, what you ini, t-shirt, eh, t-shirt? ngieke, kwenzana ke kumuz far than, ozoza, enkonzweni eh, 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 ngie okapropiate i kacha da ka, ifala gopi esu, unkungulu, moyngwe ngoba, nganjo, and has, oh, what you lenwa chana in kosi, hanging season, compala for six months angza ni tade umundu lenwa esu, umundu, ngikond para mas scripture, he para pants took me six months la in kosi, yes, umxlanke, oh, what you ti na osi keta, oklogi, ngoba, my question was cause why another church? eh, manganga, mama, da yes, yes angfutka, manganga I was so resistant nganpela, nganpela ngibu amine ekaya, angnamfundis me na mfundis, mketanabi me na ngangafundisa bani, mfundisi as in, tushapet, angaza mfundisi ngibu, ngana, is far than, nganlot footy ya batanda, man, onda batanda, no, no I'm Texas, people has a tendency of crashing your space I'm Texas yeah, what is people has tendency, oh, what you bashuma tanda, yengawe umut, eh, bo, umundu, oh, Baba ngite, abola if ever angikola, ngaba sazannaw you come, zukruma tanda, yamine ngaba sazannaw I go, bangnan I needed my space at all times and I was not a tough person or tando was with what's happening around even a man, you say, it's my, it's in my nature ngikumbula sasa no ngmava la eklenmo me na, umama, binteleo donji, guanele, yamine lenjale ekay, guanele ah si we public start oh, sandilo, hamba, yenge yeah, sandilo, yatu, hama, sandi, ata, eh, lenjale ekana, lenjale I'm talking, ata, I'm talking ya kona, pela ka umangiehepe, anangshlo, ngufunu, oh, what I'm not that adventurous, I'm not that abantu bayasi, what you ini your favorite meal he octane angi, agi ngogun, koba ngiehepe, wang, hamba, go funu, oh, what yehepe, je yes, again so, inver, we am leo angfunu wa zew, I'm glad we can get filla ah, kusyon, into we am leo kono wati, asagba ni ma, mangala ku daasibo, nku YouTube angitan de me na, yongkeli, ndu nganpela ngonshababu, si ya manje, ngobe, tipa, me ya kemanje angitan, yep, no, no, manje Oh, gubam, ay, angtani, pele, honest, angtandi. Agu, kogime, ngiguanzo, ngop, find somebody needs to be helped out there, angtandi, gobe spotlight, angtani, pele. Ang, ah, she, ngoba, ngatandi. Ngoba, komo, dozo, oh, oh, shi, yama, iso, shingitala, omu, omontu, iso, shingitala, manje, muni, basget. No, honestly, amba, ne, sevan, Baba, eh, eh, omu, laben, gos, yes, ose, zaga. Ah, who is for the spotlight? Angi, fun, angi, fun, goba, anywhere, goba, I feel, oguti, you want to crash in my space. Kwa, da, ngob, inkosi, ngbeze, na, gus, nglanaki, yawa. Yinga, ko, giri, mine, ngange, balega, ngai, fundo, ngale. I'll talk about, I'll talk about, eh, ba, ndleni, ngisavaglone. Bape, ngagaze, bangizwe, ngiti, amen. Yinga, ko, batu, how, sa, fundisi. Wa, gomzo, ozo, guto, angli the home cell. Pe, ngoba, ngiga, savmete, ngat, kasing, did the home cell. That was it. Angfune, za lotu, lo, ngiehepe, nje, gutiye, shem, sorry, zam, danam, sorry, bagit, sorry. Ywa, ngi, sorry, yen, bo, na, inkosi, yamku pa, kulo, mku, eh, ngafunge, za lotu, eh, hepe, nje, ya, monte, jana, et, others, can. Ay, gobe, eh, vid, yeah, ngisong, esam, eh, she's good, anget. Exactly, inkosi, samse, yes, inkosi. Yes, Janelle? Inda, bebe, ti, inda, ba, inda, be, sektene, inda, na, inda, be, sektene. Kumele, siberedi, in season and out of season. Obani, omastaway, omoyengwe. Uti, gu, gu, u, extetin, oma, ibandla, antakili, kulega, uti, ngilukani, se, dobani? Oh, so, dobani, obana, bas, for umsabenz, again, now, we can't say no, omonge, domese. Na, ngigbo, ne, futi, unye. Kukona, eh, bo, la, ba, abanga, be, zio, ave, baby, zio, bazaba, itume. Ngina, ma, bazaba, itu, eh, bo, and ba, funa, la, my tackle, ba, for the attack. Kit, kwa, da, inkosi, yam, oba, la, bantu, bayasi, ogutiye, umsabenz, oka, kana, ni, ogoholi, bantla. Let her, domsabenz, irresponsibility, bo, yala, koo, yonki, tunkulunkulaka, itali, omshlaben, ayiko into, enavillaging a soul, umpefmo. And then, best, again, sa, meaning, ye, be responsible for that soul. Hey, inda, ba, da, okay, gipindi, the Bible, inda, time? How many minutes? Left, left, yabo, okay, now, eh, wa, kobe, sa, domboz. Hepe, anget. Ba, nda, we hepe, anget, oh, na, songa, sza, gela, anget, sza, gela, anget, siya, bo. Koni, ma, mban, ay, ma, ma, eh, ma, ma, ngampe, la, ay, ma, mban, nji, eh, ma, mban, ngampe.
Oh nga, no nga, oh nga, ya nga zaz, without understanding the ban nga zaz. And then this thing became more burdensome, gubon. Momu nga zinfa ban nga zaz, sambis, sambis kat. Up until somebody invites her, eh, nga zinweni, I figure, ah, 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 I'll be happy and satisfied. Ati, whew, kaza nga pumula, ngatoli ban tiga nga zaglon. Uti kaza nga pumula, nga ni? Tobi ban tiga nga zaglon. Gadingo was waiting for her, guda figure besi zot, and nga zaga manji. Ah, so, kogba laga pala manji, abo? Okay, multuches? Question? Of Father Adomia? Kuchu de ish ne ba nga zanpela, komo da boza manji? Angish bozo nga zon, ngatla, ngatla, ma kena?
Okay, mina ba bo bozo wa mi uzi, enu bozo ba buti. Um, if nga nga zili, let's say I'm jogging, like running, and I want to pray, like in the morning, not, oguti, chape, oguti, I just want to have a conversation with Holy Spirit. Does that mean that prayer is void before the Lord, oguti? Those conversations are always, nga zin, and they are not valid? Because sometimes you feel like, chape, you just wanna be outdoor and just release some sort of stress and just speak to the Lord, chape, while running.
I, mina nga kada vaza ma kena, oguti, ey, nga risk. Goba, oma nga bedi ziditu, we have to pray with head covered? Hey, nga risk, awa de, nga nga zaz, goba, angit aksende, nga zaz, angit ausinde. Ausinde. Aus, aus, yesinde? Yes, yesinde? Yesinde wako? Wenzi wa nga naku, nga macha, ngensimbi? Eh. God, u baba ngati, goba izwi litie, anfunu eshokwena, besi u baba wati, sabuka izwi. Oma nga bedi ti izwi, kumele, nga kulayi, nga nga zili. Kushu kifaza njale, abo njale? And foot oguti, let's konza, hey, onkulu, onkulu, wa zgoangi? Wa ya zgo ti, eh la, ngoyotanu kchoka? Umbana wa kwa ya zgo, tano kchoki? Wa ya zga? Kote, dana agen, eh, azanga faga, eh, yo rum, no, tchoba choka, yo. Eh, agbo, agbo. Amen?
Um bozo wa mukina ba be oguti.
God, ope di le, le god?
Thank you.
Usu bo nga zan, no mo, no mo kchoka manji? Ngatla, ngatla, ngatla.
Um bozo wa mukina ba, ogut, maliti, u baba de praz, oguti, tiwa, if nga funu nga zani, no, no, upu. Um, oguti, is it acceptable, yini, after omundo's father, nese, pokile, to go and minister in France? Because, um...
Kote, lea shoi ziye? Let, if it's shameful for a woman to shave her hair? If it's shameful? Sade, de fu, nga nga, lo bo bozo, bozo, wa mokonzi? Wa mokonzi, bozo, bozo? Eh? Ba mokonzi, bozo, bozo? Ya kraz? Ba mokonzi wati, ah, omu omu, da nga li, nga la, ta, kushu tuge, goba, anfunu nga zan, ku ndi, abo, nde njale? So, pe gu mbalu, o mbalu ti, oguti, if it's shameful for a woman to shave her hair, let her what? In what sense? Sa kraza fut, roteke, ama karchas, atlo gen. Saburi ndawin mbile, sa ti, itu wash, so, itu witchcraft, itu witchcraft, eighteen, konzing this era. Itige, oma, oeslisa, esola, omga k, oguti, koni mko sho sho, wa zan, aga ban jio, ya musola, goba ban jio, kando amaj? Wata kenzian? Aga mta ta, mese, gung priest? Albe, oguda ba gung priest? O mpriz, uzon zan, uzon kumula, eh, covering, amshave, besi, afaga mans, afago, no, besi, eh, eh, kumikess of a mans, besu faza, ya pozala mans. Oma nga be, eh, cheetah, eh, cheat, esaka, esbeto, sobola. From there, kfuna ahame, enga, tuale, ahame, eh, nade, zifu de gi. Everybody will know in the area, uta, ahahaha! Smiling a red there, eh, abo, nde njale? That is Jewish custom. But gentle custom was this, uban, wa ekond, go esfazan. One, kwa we prostitute. Ngangobona, eh, ingobe ba, you faga, zazi, de zonke. Gala, nga git, na agin, abate, asimzimba, banchan, bashanin, zingo, bole, se, abo, nde njale? Bona ba be nga zaz, always be. Kwa gobe, ama sex slaves, akona, ma tempelin. These are, I'm not talking about a ma oje, zama part, here religion, go tiwa, lo, onkulu, onkulu, like, eh, tu, iso, oguti, oguzasezo, gubon, komo. So, abesfazan, ba be la alwa, eh, ma tempelin, ba be nganewel. Ogus tatu, abantu, abesfazan, ababe, practice, eh, witchcraft, guli ndo, ya bole, ba be putra, gopi, eh, kand. So, oma nga be, the Otensca Pole, here is a very naughty. Kumbu ana bazu, wa yoba shameful, go esfazan, o putri? Ati, ah, ufunu nga mbugen, jengo? Faga, 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 lapo? Yeah. Aga konu, fu bo, ngaloo, mm, 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 abo, nde njale? Yes, waga? Aseska, kant, kote, if ever, then, anala, is, la, le, 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 onkulu, onkulu, is things that we need to take into consideration? If u boga, ezinda, zan, onkulu, oma, eh, open-ended sentence? Nani, nohlo bo lo bozo, oboso, ona tingimpendulo? Kote, we npe, we nia kwezi, ogunegi ans? Yes, waga? Sebo. Are you our time keeper, ngati? Multuches?
Ay, ba, ba, ngiswile, la, pa, kraz, or la, pa, kene sis, gen do, da, eh, Adam, eh, yati, eh, wa, wa, shuti, eh, do, da, fute, eh, no, eh, pa, ati. Ay, gen, paso.
Kha, 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 ah, ah. Kha. Kraz. Yema, yema, yema? Ek, eh, ma kraz? Isiko, sase, soto. Ekamela, isiko, somzimba, Adam, yeah, Adam. Is homo sho, says, he, per, oguti, Adam, iti, human race. Oh. Koni kamela, eh, shiva, eh, 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 eleslunges, tshtelile, homo sapien. Abo, nde njale? Kushu oguti, eh, isko desu. Kube, chapter five, oteke, insa, du, isko, there was a male and a female. Ujuzazi, eh, ndato, ziko, sase, soto, nga pa, ati, konu. Then, onkulu, onkulu, esfazan, manji, desiko, sa, lala, wase, kipu bambo, wase, akange, eh, woman.
Ki la po ge ba, oguti, eh, ome sa, kage, eh, woman. Eh, la, pa, kwa, ba, se, korinti, seliti, eh, oesfazan, eh, kushu, tu, tu, mo, rendo. Kwenza, kala, ni, ngala, ba, be esfazan, abane, na, wa, ma, do. Ogo, si, ena, ke, manji, ba, u, tu, mo, bona, kun, onkulu, onkulu, kushuti, eh, na, kote, manji, butu, wa, kila, ka, angit, manji, u, tu, men, do, te, manji, zipin, eh, guposi, eh, ba, eh, cha, cha, la, ba, ab, ab, basa.
Zipin ne?
Umo, no, abo, pe, umo.
Oh, umbozo, zipin ne, uti umbozo? Okay, okay. Na impendu, na impendu, na impendu. Mka, se, pege, kumaitu, chapter number nineteen. Aga, se, pege, from verse number, mka, goangi? Matthew, chapter number nine, oh. New King James Version. Ki tela, se, pege. Kango, lo bozo, onkunegi? Omposto, lo, be, eh, lo bozo, pe, eh, lo bozo? Uzipin ne? Ombozo, ka, ma, mki. Okay, okay. Ki tela, se, pege, eh, kum, verse number... Verse, from verse materialization.
The Book of Matthew, chapter nineteen, from verse ten. His disciples said to him, "If such is the case of the man with his wife, it is better not to marry him."
Amate, sappos, ati, ay, oma nga be, lenda, benji, ay, nga nga, shati, abo, nde njale? Izwa, ati, nga zas, Jesus Christ, verse number eleven.
Verse eleven. "But he said to them, 'All cannot accept the same, but only those to whom it has been given.'"
Ogutakse, no, onkumondo, ona, woman, na, na, nisho? Goba, ilabo, pele, who has been given, or ba be, lo, onkanga shati, abo, nde njale? Kube, kant, verse number twelve.
"For they are eunuchs, who were born thus from their mother's womb."
Ujbo, kona, abantu, ababeng, abelu, umshato, usugela, eh, si, bitu, kamama. Always be.
"And they are eunuchs, who were made eunuchs by me."
Gukona, abanga shati, ngobenzo, ba, ya, abantu. Always tatu?
"And they are eunuchs, who have made themselves eunuchs by the kingdom of heaven's sake."
Ogushuti, gukona, gukla, always tatu, no, man, la, belu, umshato, kote, abona, ba ti, sa, obong, umshato, nganla, ni? Yonbozo, kamkulu, onkulu. Ba ti, bona, ba funkonzangi, atu, si, evangel. Ngama, yamazu. Akse, no, onkumondo, abelu, umshato. Akse, no, onkumondo, abelu, miyeni, akse, no, onkumondo, abelu, esfazan. Yes, waga? Aga, se, bu, first quarter, chapter number seven. Aga, se, bu, si, funu, N L T. Kote, oma, konu, living translation, ngan, eh, live in translation, mona. First quarter, chapter number... Ati, mi, how? Senke, pega, nga po? Kaza nga, oguti, mina, 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 mina. Eh, when I was nga, uti, njani, njani, wen? Unja, wen? Unja, wen? Okay. Aga, se, pege, o, verse number seven, chapter number seven, verse number seven, first quarter details.
"But I wish everyone were single, just as I, yet each person has a special gift from God of one kind or another."
Okay. Uti, posa, ba, o, goba, ge, se, ngaya, une, zato, zake, hai, bele. Eh, ezah, hamzana, oguti, asakeska, te, nde njale? Simo, nga, eh, wa, chale, so much, oguti, eh, nganbe, nganbe, eska, asiko. Okay? Sete, we are free, sa, oguti, eh, nga be, no, kenzian? Kote, manji, eh, onkumondo, sa, bele, zake? Kushu, ilise, eh, sa, ke, ilise. Ubano, opetele, eh, living translation. Anna, not the new living, but just the living translation. And la, umshato, eh? In king, onkuma, shato, ah, outro, you trouble, you, your, eh, zan, besi, angene. Angene, angene, ni, le? Angit, infasulte. Angit, infasulte, ay, no, reverse, la. La, pe. Eh, zia, buya, zia, happen, and pen, eh, debuka. Kono, kono, ona, eh, the living translation? Oh, okay. Ki tela? Mka, go fun, eh? Na, ilam, verse number seven. Kabi, parisi, the living Bible? Of fun, this? Verse seven? Yes.
"I wish everyone could get, get along without marrying."
Open a vote, open a vote?
"I wish everyone could get along without marrying, just as I do. But we are all not the same. God gives, God gives some the gift of a husband or wife, and others, he gives the gift of being able to stay happily unmarried."
Aswak. Aswak. Kushu, eh, sa, belo, o, tumse, benzo, wa, mi, mina, oguti, homewek, yami, goes, nga be, mina, gilip, mi. Kumbula, wat, ah, utre, makato, kore, suwan, kona, ba, be, from the mother's womb, oguti, ngenge, bona. Beso, ba, kona, benzo, ba, ya, ba, oguti, ngenge, ba, shati, bona. Beso, kona, ba, ti, mina, for the sake, kimo, kwa, ti, ngenge, ngashati. Yes, waga? So, lapaga, wa, na, aga, se, te, oyala, nga, zalela, oguti, pena, mi, ya, fun, gibo, omisde, no, mi, gibo, omis, se, bon. Ndjongo, ba, bo, la, mi, nganche, bon, ba, bo, la, mi, nde njale? Ni, ya, face, na, la, nguti, kwenjana? Ma, kwenjana? For, la, kule, o, tumkosu, nga be, mina, nga be, lo, eh? Ya, fasta, abo, nde njale? Ngani, goba, uzopiz, ufuni, zin, do, nga be, la, nga zon? Kambe, lapo, tkeno, su, su, tet, no, su, tet, weh? Ah, kumo cricket, go, besi, beru, ama, hen, cricket, ama, ama, mizas, this and that. Kanti, mm, when I, ufike, la, nga, nga, fa, fe, kon? Fa, bozo? Eh, mina, took me sixty years, bozo? Ngatla, buya. Ay, ngatla, 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 ngatla. Bozo, zin, oguti, mina, nga be, la, la, ona, se, mese, mizwe, nyama, as indicator, oguti, eh, gi, 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 jale. Ngani, goba, nganze, oguti, oguba, waba, no, mo, se, nga zas, Jesus Christ, oguti, u, u, zite, ne, ona, ona, be, in connect with opposite sex. Ngan, goba, omu, tu, me, zalo, ozalo, and a thin membrane that insulate you. That thin membrane gets prickly the moment you cross the border. Once either a male or a female lose virginity, that thing is punched already. Goba, usu, ya, skunjani, oguti, ndo, zan, of opposite sex. Su, ya, zan, zan, ukis, su, ya, zan, zan, glala, nde njale? Esu, mzinga, ba, ku, la, nga zan, lo, wa, bozo, before. Oma, ja, when, omu, tu, zo, shati, goba, imizi, yami, iti. We are getting ready for wrong reasons. Ogushuti, we are scratching and itch using the wrong apparatus. Yes, waga? Don't mess with umshato. Ha! Hi! Anglula, angsi. Ay, goba, ay, goba, nga, sa, wa, intra? Ni, na, ay, ti, o, tumposa, pa, routine? Uti, eh, emshato, eh, uzol, tangan, anezin, kenga, ezining. So, I want you to be spared from those problems. But, I mean, ay, sa, amso, kula, pambili, u, ngene? Lo, so, pambili. Lo, so, pambili. Oma, la? Sa, pele, skat. How? Manji, ndoda? Eh, manji, mas, ban, ban, oti, eh, ngivu, ngixen, ngia, pe, nga, nga, zin. Goba, lo, muto, u, thole, u, koke, sound, de la, before, shati. Manji, shati, de, manji, akos, sound, ote, nde njale? Yeah. Akos, sound, ote, nde njale? Manji, asai, bo, ngan, manji, eh, be, kute, eh, eh, u, la, na? Before, when, eh, zin, kute, nde, pele? Kute, eh, ama, kawa, zo, kubri, sound, eh, ngan, ngan, kofa, ba, kona? Eh, eh, riches, be, wa, kona? Ma, shati, de, manji, oh, mama, adi, huh? Atepu, atepu, ya, adi, huh? Apa? Manji, koni, zin, ngan, sa, u, zan, zan, manji, goba, konu, ma, gas, man, ban? Koni, koni, zin, ngan, sa, zan, ban, goba? Ati, kanda, be, kwa, yama, 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 do, ti, angit, umthole, eh, lo, do, de, leo, se, benza? Manji, mkipela? Ya, bo, la, ma, do, ti, aga, bo, la, ma, do, ti, fa, se, benza, ya, kena, se, benza? Ya, fun, nde njale? Yes, waga? Yes. Bu, kuba, de, ban, bu, bu? Yes, waga? I, boy, in kos. Akom, lo, zo, inchala? Baba, me, se, se, fa, la manji? Oh, the hand? Le, umprophet, wa, matu, le, umprophet, wa, matu? Akse, no, wa, sa, golo, wa, matu? Bozo, kena, matu? How? Ah, sorry, sorry, ngan, klo, yes, ngan, klo. Ki tela, mina, mo, funa, eto, manja, sorry, 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 sorry.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you so much for the teaching, Baba, si, abo. I just hope my question will be clear enough.
Yes.
If you so, thole, ma, oguti, since you have taught us about, um, nga zaz, and the importance of it, how, how would you help someone who is coming to church and doing it just for the sake of fitting in? Not, oguti, something that emanates from the heart? Then, the second question to that would be, oguti, wouldn't that be part of religion or doing something religiously, but in a, obuki, from the heart? Then, always be. In the context of inda, la, kuse, benza, kona, umoy, ngweli? Because I, the scripture that we've read, si, akuluma, ka, kulu, about prophesying and uksetenzis, how would you assist someone, oguti, kunga, treni, go, besi, ngazuti, singwa zaz? Because, si, funa, oguti, swaz, prophet, si, funu, kwazi, uksetenzis, uksedenz, kwa, moy, ngweli, oguti, gobe, more efficient, ulas, uska, whether they are in church or they are outside of church. But, gobe, oguti, we are doing it because it is obedience to God. Amen.
Yebuzo, lo bozo, ku, one, impendu, lo, pa, ati? Okay, aga, se, beganche, aga, se, beganche. Ni, azin, tla, impendu, song? Part, kwe, song, kukona, omundo, osen, soderenli, nukan? How? Abate, abazaz? Okay. Bozo, si, bena, ku? When, usu, akule, la, wa, wati, ngos, ngfunk, senzomi? Wa, kule, raso, kule, kushu, it's a gift, la, 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 it's give of faith. Faith. Song, asesenzis, goba, sin, kono, pe, oguti, inisindis. Just like oma nga be, eh, eh, omu, de, kula, eh, do, 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 ati, ona, inkinga, nak, 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 nak. Whatever medication, even injection, de, do, do, zon, ya, ya, na? So, ta, tumu, do, 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 shala, nganbe, shala, fuk, pil, mi, abo, a, shao, do, do, eh, fuk, pil. Aga, bozo, bozo? Ngogunjalo, if you come to Christ, o, za, ya, faith. Oma nga be, eh, tingo, Jesus Christ, sa, oguti, eh, bozo, kamkulu, onkulu, ungo, abantu, abantu, ngabani? Nja, abantu, an. Abantu, an, they take everything that are being taught. Ay, am, ay, young, add, this and that. Ogushuti, eh, las, if, o, si, beni, chizi, yo, ngan, abantu, an. Oguti, eh, if God says, nga, goba, pele, lenda, nga zaz, ay, veli, gopi, veli, gopi, eh, zan, onkulu, onkulu. Las, etene, eh, am, chizi, am I willing to submit? Once, nga, ti, eh, o, Jesus, nga zas, Lord, kuri, os, simply means, I am his property, meaning I will do anything and everything. So, ay, ikui, nga, ya, impunu, ya, menzo, God, ngit, ya, bo, le, era? Ay, oma, nga, zas, Jesus, la, na, ya, nga, nego? Ya, bo, yonge, end. Ogushuti, la, na, kumele, oguti, si, tata, iti, will, si, be, ngapans, kwe, will, ya, ki? Si, submit completely, without any reservation. Ogushuti, oma nga be, o, sa, inkingo, ti, wenza, indes, onkulu, kenzun, la, ki? Awasindiswa? Awasindiswa? Lende, o, sa, ibalaya, kus, kuzo, ba, eh, religion, kushu, tue, wen, uye, nga zinweni? Religiously? Kucha, understand, wenza, napan? Oma nga be, inko, se, gwa, zo, oguti, il, 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 inganese, eh, re, she, pyo, muto, na, ye? Konu, onkulu, ne, 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 ngani, ya, ki? Ati, eh, the closest relationship that a man can ever experience in the flesh would be, eh, umshato. Ay, goba, onkulu, eh, eh, shati, ibantu? Eh, umshato? Lo, kukuma, eh, union, eh, unity? And kukuma, de, eh, as, as, much as wife submit to her husband on the basis, no, ndanak, oma, submit, eh, kus, Jesus Christ, ne, zulak? La, you don't need, eh, you don't need me to convince you. This is your journey with Christ, you have personal faith in Jesus Christ, wen, na, ye? Kushu, tuge, oma nga be, yene, ete, zulak, oti, mm, mm, agafike, gmina, yine, fana, fia, wen? Udu, submitted? Kushu, no, sa, de, pele, wana? Ay, kide, u, fiala? Ilalando, kala? That is one. Manji, oma nga, oguti, how can you help? Second question, how can you help somebody? Oguti, eh? Anga, ngeslinge, so, oguti, goba, le, ti, izwi? Ngan, gomu, da, professor, fango, nga zaz, besi, oguti, fire, nga zaz, kona, zan, professor, njalo? Somehow, that is skewed approach, la. Kubili, izwi, liksho? Prayer and prophesy. Ni, am, prefer, lo, muto, mina, ati, eh, I don't know what today brings, but just in case, in, kua, so, mu, seven, this, I will be ready. No, ti, oguti, ngikoi, oguti, kwenzo, sa, jenzia, kha? Just in case, goba, nga, sa, oguti, funu, wenza, namtla? Zobar, eh, u, no, oguti, eh, ngit, no? Angit, ndi, tu, mi, nga, goba, fusha, o, moy? Umkono, mbeza, too much, oti, ngau, ngau, fitha, foot, umkono, onkuno? Funu, bona, la, umkono? Yes, waga? Okay, sebo. Ami, ame? Baba, me, o, time keeper, onja, na, time keeper? O, besi, mtembe, si, eh, se, mten? Oma, tu, na, ba, git? Oma, eh, o, pe, oma? How? I'm need, discount, kati, thirty, thirty seconds? Fun, ma, impendu, number, thirty seconds, now? It will be the first. Si, ne, o, thirty seconds, take it, wa, kote, do, am, azish?
Okay, Baba, ye, kungbozo, oguti, since, eh, 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 ilokuza, eh, eh, do, is a symbol of authority, also, kavari, she? Let's say, chape, someone touches my hair, and, eh, sa, la, nga, zaz, oguti, whenever you pray for us, you are imparting, so, so, impartation, eh, zegala, eh, la? So, if someone is touching my hair, ngales, o, ska, eh, or someone does my hair, does it mean, oguti, eh, does it take away that authority? Ma, was, lo, muto, lo, yo, chape, impart something negative? Eh, chape, let's say, it's an unbeliever, or someone who is a believer, gota, koni, ta, eh, kela, impart? Nando, oguti, futsi, eh, kulo, ko? If, if, that's one question, it's the same question, lena, gota, let's say, chapege, gi, fage, something, la, kama, breath, ngapans, kaza, kaza, nga, kavari, she, ngi, do? Does it take away the authority, kubase, kavari, she, di, do?
Yes, it does. Why? Not so, I go, this week alone? Konu, muto, ote, umkulega? Ote, umkulega? Yini, o, be, eh, salo? Emadis, be? No, last week, Tuesdays, emadis, be, yes? Ote, umkulega, eh, sa, salo, no, omu, tu, mten, de, kand? Oma, kwa, la, lo, muto, ya, pomit, muto? Lati, no, uli, no, su, bezile? List, la, shai, le, ibiza, te? Okay? Gala? Lo, na, esfazan, oti, ake, omu, tu, mten, de, kand? Ngan, goba, ona, ba, dal, ake, ikanda, la, ke, alt, do, muto? Lo, muto, ake, kemoso, onkulu, onkulu, se, mso, omiya? She knows the power of the head and the power of the hair. Izwi? Bozo, omiya, mo, ya, zlo? Kote, bozo, the real one, aska, zlo? Ati, oma, muto, manji, fas, jan, eh, manji, sngas, ma, salo? Yes, ona, ya? Kote, kuleka, oguti, ikaze, kava? Omu, yo, ke, ze, kand? Ay, o, be, o, plate, ay, o, be, o, faga, eh, ma, eh, ma, ama, eh, kuma, ndez, ne, faga? Eh, ne, ne, faga, lo, gobe? Eh, kuma, eh, kuma, ya, ay, kuma, eh, kuma, ama, sentin? Emban, eh, we had a very first experience. Oma, omoy, ngoli, eti, we are at a space now, eh, prophetic season, at space now, oti, jobing, go, see, is elevator, oti, koni, zidang, eh, fang, avais, zan, zan, manji, including, eh, logo, gwa, sekand?